During the council. Please rise for indication.
Our most gracious God, come to unite. Thank you for all the religious leaders in our community and concerned citizens that you've sent forth to pray for our city and our council. And as we paid attention to their prayers and all the messages that you sent them to send to us, the common thought was the wisdom to vote the best for the people. And I think with that being sent so many messengers by you and delivered to us, that that is the direct result of the city's growth is what was in the city's best interest. We ask that you continue to bless us and guide us and direct us and give us the wisdom to vote. What is, in your eyes, best for the city of Popple Bluff, we will continue to prosper and remember to give you all the glory and grace in thy precious name, we pray.
Amen.
Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Proten McVeigh.
Here.
Mayor DeGerris.
Here. Thank you. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
I'll start things off. Jeff Shawn, Butler County, EMA Director, 513 Poplar Street. A couple of EMA items I want to bring up with you folks. If you live out in the county or near the city, on Thursday when we had significant storms, I think everybody knows that all the sirens now work, not just the city sirens, but all the county sirens. And that's been quite the process to get to that point, and it was just in time for Thursday night when it really did count. That's part of a collaboration between the county and the city that's been successful, and we moved the EMA repeater, made significant improvements that I won't worry you out with right now, but the bottom line is because the city and the county worked together, we've reached this point now where we have as good a safety as we can produce on the siren side of things. So, in celebration of that fact and that collaboration, Thursday at 10 o'clock, we're going to have a ribbon cutting at the White Oak Tower to celebrate this collaboration and this success. So I would cordially invite all members of city council and anybody in the city that would like to show up for that, but I really want to give you guys a personal invitation. Municipal Utilities, I've already been told that Mr. Bach is going to be out of town, but he was instrumental in working with me for us to get to this point, so tip of the hat to him. So I'd love to have you at the ribbon cutting on Thursday. Second item is tomorrow at 10 o'clock at the Chamber Conference Room, we're going to have a presentation from Randy Scrivner, who is the Director of Logistics for SEMA, State Emergency Management Agency. He's going to give about a one-hour presentation of SEMA's Butler County plan, what SEMA will do, how they will react if we have a big event like, you know, the big earthquake or a Joplin-style tornado or that sort of thing. So I would invite city council, anybody that can come to attend that tomorrow morning, just so you'll get to hear firsthand what SEMA intends to do, and hopefully he'll take some questions and we'll have some input. So I wanted to invite you to that tomorrow morning. And last thing, I've taken off my EMA cap and just putting on my citizen's cap and saying that, you know, about four to five years ago, I worked with Lloyd Matthews and then Director Jason Davenport and a couple of other people on the Black Earth Coliseum Board to do something about the Veterans Memorial, which at that time was incomplete, was unsightly in some ways and maybe a little dangerous because it was uneven, the bricks weren't in place. So we got cobbled together a plan to finance that, and so a loan was executed, I think for around $85,000 if my memory serves me right. So here we are years later, and there's still $55,000 owed on that wall. So to try to stir public support for getting this veterans' wall paid off because there's a loan against it, I would never want that loan to end up being on the backs of city taxpayers. I feel like the county as a whole should come together and donate and pay for that debt that's owed on the wall. So maybe I'm a little crazy, but myself and two other men are going to ride the Katy Trail in one continuous bicycle ride. That's 237 miles. We're asking people to donate based on how many miles we ride. 10 cents a mile would be $23.70, a dollar a mile, $237. If somebody's really poor, do a penny a mile, $2.37. But we're inviting the community to come together, let's donate, let's get this debt paid off. I feel like it would be dishonoring to our vets if we don't get it paid off with private donations. I would never want to disrespect our veterans by leaving that debt unpaid and the city having to pay it. So I just wanted to publicly ask for your support. Help me out, maybe each of you can write a check. A dollar a mile wouldn't hurt me at all. I'd appreciate it. And then say a little prayer, I'll be 58 when we make that ride. We're going to ride on the birthday of Billy Cannell, and we're going to start out in Clinton, and we're not going to stop until we get to St. Charles. So we're estimating 23 to 24 hours. So, any questions? You look like you have a question.
I'll support you and I'll spread the word.
Thank you.
I think it's a good thing.
I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for giving me a few moments.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move ahead to workshop items. Item A, the city council review a request from Butler County Commission for a temporary construction easement to construct a portion of the staircase reconstruction on the Popple Bluff Railroad Depot Grand Staircase Project within the city's driveway.
I think you'll have a copy of that in your packets. This is just a temporary construction easement they need from the city in order to be able to reconstruct that grand staircase. I was thinking there's a drawing in your packets, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions or comments, I would make a motion that we move item A to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council review a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute escrow trust agreements relative to the city's bonds.
There is several pages of documents in your packets. Essentially, what they represent is both the Popple Bluff Building Corporation and that has already executed a resolution, and the other documents relate to the purchase price of the cables, of selling our cable system has already been completed, the asset purchase agreement's completed, the funds have been set aside by the purchaser. Bond council now tells us that we have to set up two escrow accounts to defees these bonds. We can't give them clear title until the bonds are defeesed. There is also a document in here that releases some collateral from the 2009 bond issue. So essentially, there's 17,5 out there available for us right now. There is three approximately, and these numbers are approximate until the data actually do, but approximately $3,461,689 on the Series 2012 bonds, $5,442,268 on the Series 25, 2005 bonds. Those have to be defeesed. The money that they have in escrow right now is the 17,5. The defeasance of those bonds will come out of those funds along with a transaction amount that will be funded in the escrow in the amount of $750,000. The defeasance of the bonds will actually, if the council adopts this ordinance, the escrow accounts will be set up and funded tomorrow. The actual defeasance, there's quite a bit that bond council has to do, will be on April 15th of both series, along with the system collateral lease, release, and the transaction escrow account will be funded. The remainder of the balance, $7,846,043, will be transferred to the city of Popple Bluff's account as soon as the bonds are defeesed and we have clear title. And this was part of the asset purchase agreement. This just defines it a little better, and I think you also had a couple of pages of the asset purchase agreement on your desk tonight that have changed somewhat in order to also define this process a little better.
Right.
Yes, I mean, the language is there in general terms, this just makes it a little bit more, well, quite a bit more specific as to how exactly the defeasance process is taking place. And I know Mr. Davis is here tonight if he needs to address us on anything.
Alan, you might explain the transaction account in a little more detail.
Sure. I'm mayor, city council, my name's Alan Davis, Savannah, Georgia. This, of course, the transaction closed on 3/14. The purchaser set the purchase price aside of $17,500,000 for the purposes identified here. So the defeasance of those bonds is to be determined, as Doug said, based upon the actual amount required to cover the interest and principal on those bonds through the term. And so that will actually be set at the day, on the day that they're defeesed, to make sure the proper amount is accounted for. Now, I will say that if we, if there is a, I was, one of the things we did work out here is if there is a balance in excess of the amount required to defees those bonds in each one of those escrow accounts, that comes back to the city as well. So this is an estimate. It's certainly not going to be more than that, it might be less, and that money will come back. The $7,846,043 is the net, that's the net proceeds after, after the bonds are paid off and the $750,000 is put into the escrow account to cover any unforeseen expenses that may occur over a period of 12 months. In the event that there are none, that money comes back to the city as well. So that's set aside as part of the transaction. And typically, a transaction like this would call for $1,007,000 or $2,000,000, but we were able to basically make the case to the purchaser that the city's not going anywhere, that the transaction has been handled appropriately, there are not any loose ends out there, so it's a substantially reduced number typical of a transaction like this. And of course, once the bonds are defeesed and the collateral is released, the documents that are provided pursuant to that, then the money can then be released into the city's general fund.
And this was all anticipated in the asset purchase agreement. I mean, it was mentioned in there, this just is required by bond council in order to set up the two escrow accounts.
There's a good possibility we could get a large portion of the $750,000 at some point in time, possibly.
I'd say that, based upon what I see out there now, it all should come back, plus interest. So it'll be simply in account, earning interest until such time as it's released, in no longer than 12 months, maybe sooner.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions, I can make a motion, we move this to the voting session tonight.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Item C, the city council review bids received for hay baling at the Popple Bluff Municipal Airport.
You've got those bids in front of you. This is something that reduces maintenance from the street department to have to mow that. They do mow a certain distance out around the landing lights and from the runway itself, but Mike Smith, the airport manager, has essentially been able to contract that. It means in the neighborhood of $2,000 a year to the airport in additional revenue and means a lot in reducing expenses to the street department. So we've been doing this for, what, Mike, six years or so now? And the only difference in this one and the previous bids is this one is, the contract is for a five-year agreement as opposed to a three-year, which is what we have been doing. Low bidder was Bob Bryant at $620 per bail. Bids were all fairly close. Two or more.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we move item C to the voting session to be held on April 21st.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the disposal of antiquated records.
You have a list of those records in your packet. They've all been checked against the records retention manual. Mr. Bach's here if you have any question, but it's something that every department does from time to time just to make room for additional records.
Let's move.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we move item D to the voting session to be held April 21st.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding an amendatory agreement between the city of Popple Bluff and Southwestern Power Administration. Mr. Bach?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In 2005, the city of Popple Bluff bought into the Plum Point Energy Station in Oclaw, Arkansas. At that time, Plum Point was inside of Entergy's control area. In 2013, Entergy joined the Midwest Independent System Operator, or MISO. This placed the Plum Point Station in the real-time market. Our SPA contract does not allow us to be inside of SPA's balancing authority and in the real-time market, so this amendatory agreement allows the cities to stay connected to SPA but be in the Southwest Power Pool balancing authority. I believe you had a copy of this in your packet. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
This just continues as to basically status quo, we get our electric where we normally get it?
We, correct, all of our contracts stay the same. It's just the real-time market.
No other questions, I entertain a motion, and second to move this item to the voting session to be held April 21st.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council review a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the 2014 Historical Preservation Fund Grant Agreement.
I think this has been before you all back in October, Dennis?
Yes, sir.
And it's, as I understand, it's been funded at this point?
We actually got preliminary funding approval in December. The $13,200 amount would be the amount coming from the National Parks Service Department of Interior. It requires an 8,800 city match, which has been budgeted by the planning department. This is the Kinzer-Cynthia Historic District, 57, 58 houses that we're looking at. Doesn't make anything, no obligations to the property owners, but it does give them some designation as a historic district, so.
And doing that, that also might, at some point in time, possibly give them some chance for some, I assume, some money to, possibly for upgrades in the area.
There's a process that they would have to continue individually because each property or each structure is going to be different, so they have to go for a historic grant, tax credits, things like that. But yes, this is the first step if a person were wanting to do that. We did the same thing in the 400 block of North Main, and we had one or two property owners up there look into it, and I believe one did achieve funding. Vine Street Apartments was kind of the same thing. So it's not free money, but it does give them some advantage if they indeed want to preserve their home in a historic manner.
This grant, what is the money, what are you using the funds for? If they're going to go out on their own and get their own grants, what would this go for? Just maintaining the area?
This is creating the historic district itself. A study has to be done of the homes in the area, yes.
Goes towards a study of it, basically.
We have to determine that there are enough contributing structures within that area, and so you have to be a contributing structure to be, you know, available for the funding source, but probably out of the 57 or so, we probably have 43, 44 that would be contributing up in this area. This would be bounded roughly to the north on by Lowest Street, to the west by 12th Street, to the east by 9th Street, and to the south by Kinzer. We have a couple south of Kinzer that are in it, but for the most part, that's in a block situation, that's basically where it lies at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions, I entertain a motion, and second to move this item to the voting session to be held April 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council review a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone property from RS3 Central Area Residential to C2 General Commercial for retail development on the ground level and a conditional use permit to allow for apartments on the second and third levels of an existing structure at 910 Vine Street. The option is that L.E.W. Properties LLC care of Benjamin, Robert, and Lisa Wyatt, 1707 Cypress Drive.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, Law Properties LLC, the Wyatt family are the owners. This is Kingland School, very nice old school building on Vine Street, built in 1925, I believe, and it is owned RS3 at this time, but it was rezoned to RS3, I believe, in 1992, 97. Sorry, I'm reading my wrong line. 72, it was owned RA, and then it was owned RS3 in 97. They do have a plan to use the ground-level floor as commercial office retail, and they have a adjoining building on the west end of that property that's a lunchroom, auditorium use was what it was used for in the school. They have intention to use that on a commercial basis, and then have four living units on the second floor and four on the third floor, approximately 1,800 square feet in size, so we're not talking small apartments here, we're talking substantial living area. To the north is commercial C2, to the south, east and west, is RS3 Central Area Residential. Comprehensive plan calls for medium-density residential in this area. Property's mostly level, they have a lot of open area outside of the school building on the parcel of land. It's accessed from Vine Street and from Poplar Streets. As I stated, the gym, auditorium area, the owner wishes to use this as a social banquet area with the possibility of serving alcoholic beverages on the ground level per event. You know, like if you're going to rent a banquet hall, whether it be a wedding or some other event, if they have a proper catering, caterer's license per event, that would be allowable in the C2 district. This went through planning and zoning, and we really had no substantial opposition to it, and once questions were answered, people were quite happy with the fact that we could save this old building and people could have a viable use in it. The conditional use permit would allow for apartments on the upper levels, which would make good use of the large building because it is a pretty good-sized building. For them to have residential uses in the upper floors, they would have to meet current housing codes for the city of Popple Bluff, and again, the four apartments per each level would encourage higher rental fees and make it more conducive to a family residential-type The Planning and Zoning Commission and the planning staff recommends approval of this rezoning request to C2 with a conditional use permit with the following stipulations. Due to the residential character of the adjoining properties, the permissive uses normally allowed in C2 should be limited by a deed restriction to exclude certain uses, and that would be, number one, exclude use as a bar or tavern; two, exclude massage establishment; three, exclude a tattoo establishment. Those are allowable uses in a C2 zoning, but given the fact that we're in a residential area here, that was something that planning and zoning thought was appropriate. Banquet and social events would have to obtain a temporary caterer's permit per event to serve alcohol, and the conditional use permit would go with the business owner, and if ownership changes, the new owner would have to apply for a conditional use permit to continue the use for apartments. Questions? And the owner is here tonight, by the way, if you have questions, specific questions for them.
Mr. Mayor, I drove by. That's, we all know it's a historical building, and to get a chance to keep that building as is and the owners, present owners that want to invest the kind of money they want to invest is probably a positive thing for that area, a chance for some commercial development. And they've already started doing some work. Over the last several months, they've been doing some cleanup already, and I just think to be able to keep a building of that age, I think it's just a positive thing for that area and for Popple Bluff.
I believe you're right, Mr. Branham. I mean, that is a nice building, and it'd be a shame that if it were converted to something that would degrade, you know, its character, so.
Sounds like a really neat idea.
It is.
I would never have thought about doing something like that.
If you haven't been in it, you should take advantage sometime to go in it. It is a nice building.
I guess I'm historical. I went to grade school there, and I voted the first time the year I turned 18 there. I'm glad it's going to be restored.
I think they will have a lot of interest in the apartments, you know, in the upper levels, I really do.
It's a great building for Christmas lights. Ace always has to show up.
I love the train up front.
Well, here's got some other plans for it, too. Yeah, you're right, they do a good job of decorating it.
Would they ever be allowed to have a permanent restaurant in there?
Yes. We didn't exclude with restaurant with liquor by the drink, and that was taken through planning and zoning, so we did not put that as an exception to this.
I could see where that could be a good use for it, too, to have a nice restaurant.
I think that would be really neat.
I mean, it's a beautiful building.
We didn't even have a lunchroom there when I went to school. We'd walk to the Catholic school to eat.
So, I mean, there are a lot of possibilities for it, there really are, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further questions or comments, I make a motion, we move this to the, from workshop to voting, I guess it would be April 21st.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action required items, Bill Number 7667, the city council will take action on an, action on and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Popple Bluff and the Butler County Drainage District relative to easements.
Move for first reading is 7667.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill Number 7667, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popple Bluff, Missouri to enter into an agreement with the reorganized Drainage District Number 7 of Butler County, Missouri, and Bob Sutton Real Estate and Loans LLC relative to encroachments upon the Drainage District easement.
Move for second reading, Bill Number 7667.
Second.
Motion second, second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill Number 7667, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popple Bluff, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with the reorganized Drainage District Number 7 of Butler County, Missouri, and Bob Sutton Real Estate and Loans LLC relative to encroachments upon the Drainage District easement.
Move for third option.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Yes.
Mayor Proten McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
With six yeses.
Thank you. Bill Number 7667 is passed. Bill Number 7668, the city council will take action on an ordinance vacating a portion of a platted undeveloped alleyway in order to join properties to the north and south of the alleyway.
Move for first reading is 7668.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill Number 7668, an ordinance vacating a portion of a platted undeveloped alleyway lying north of 1504 North 14th Street and running east and west from North 14th Street in the city of Popple Bluff, Butler County, Missouri.
Move for second reading, Bill Number 7668. Move for second reading, bill number 7668. Second.
Motion, second, second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7668, an ordinance vacating a portion of a platted undeveloped alleyway lying north of 1504 North 14th Street and running east and west from North 14th Street in the city of Popper Bluff, Butler County, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion, second, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
Six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7668 has passed. Bill number 7669, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending Chapter 605 entitled Business License and Regulations relative to the farmer's market.
Move for first reading, bill number 7669.
Second.
Motion, second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7669, an ordinance amending Chapter 605 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, entitled Business Licenses and Regulations by making certain amendments to Article 4 entitled Farmer's Marketplace.
Move for second reading, bill number 7669. Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7669, an ordinance amending Chapter 605 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, entitled Business Licenses and Regulations by making certain amendments to Article 4 entitled Farmer's Marketplace.
Move for adoption in bill number 7669.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak on this?
Just a second.
Just a second.
Motion, second, for comments? Now, if you'd give your name, please.
My name is Jim Crispin, 464 North Main, also involved in the historic depot where we have a farmer's market. And I just have a, really, a question here. I think the idea of a second downtown market is a plus for the downtown area. However, I do note that the item five on this, "The farmer's marketplace shall be sold, shall be used solely by persons who wish to sell produce they have raised. The marketplace shall not be used by persons offering produce or goods for resale except produce or goods produced within 100-mile radius of the city and approved by the city or the contractor. The contractor may permit the sale of baked items produced or made that are not inconsistent with this provision." And I think the discussion at the workshop meeting was that the items other than produce would be limited to 20% of the volume, or the number of stalls rented at the market, and I'd like to see that put back in.
That may very well be in the agreement that we have with the contractor. While honestly, Wally and I have talked about, you know, enforcement of this thing is going to be, the 100-mile radius, I don't know whether we can tell where watermelon come from North Texas or whether it come from Kennet, but it's one of those things where the 80% is another thing that it'd be very difficult to monitor, but I assume that will wind up being in the contract because I think the people are going to be, actually said that, that they would probably look at no more than 20%, 80% produces, I think is what they're saying.
So you're suggesting that if we determine that the 80% is not being followed, we come back to council at that time and raise an issue then?
Well, I think with the contractor, if it's going to be in the agreement with the contractor, you know, the information that I had when I revised the ordinance, there was no information in there about any percentages. The only thing that was in there was this 100-mile radius. So the next thing to come before the council is going to have to be, assuming council chooses to do this, would be to contract this out with an independent contractor, and I think the assumption is it'll be downtown Popper Bluff. And, you know, I'm not sure what all the provisions are. I haven't read all of that yet to see what was discussed and what is contained as proposals in that agreement. So that may very well be where it is. You know, I don't know, Jim, I honestly don't remember even hearing that last time, and I'm not arguing with you, I just don't remember it.
I don't think Penny said specifically, I think she did say 80% produce, I don't think she was. So, I mean, that's a, it's another provision that will be very similar to the 100-mile radius. It will be, you know, I mean, if there's 75% there, I'm not sure anybody will notice if there's somebody that sets up and does all carvings or something. We obviously know that isn't meeting those requirements. But I guess in the ordinance itself, we're trying to make it as enforceable as we can, and in the contract, we'll try to define those other things.
Acceptable, mate.
Is this going to impact the people at the Cell Barn?
We have a farmer's market right now. Actually, we have two farmer, we have farmer's market right now.
It shouldn't affect the Cell Barn. I think the main day on this is Saturday is the main day. It'll be open all the other days, where people can choose to sit up there, and the location will be where the, historically where the old farmer's market was, which was just down from the historic train depot.
I think it made it to where they are the exclusive one, though, right? Does it?
The exclusive one in town, but the Cell Barn operates under something different.
Okay.
The other ones that were, that that was talking about were ones that were set up over on Fifth Street in front of the Coliseum.
Okay.
That has moved to the back of the lot.
Where it was originally.
Yes.
It was there for years and years.
Right.
And I don't think it's exclusive. This is the only one that is, I guess for lack of a better term, city-sponsored. The city, the city actually provides a place for people to set up their produce.
I just don't want to vote for something that's going to end up limiting other entities from doing what they are usually doing, you know?
The Cell Barn will go on in the, to the Iron Mountain.
I think there'd be a lot of mad people if something impacted the Cell Barn.
I believe the location we're moving back to, if I recall right, it had, and it used to have, there was a structure there even at one time.
And that's what they're talking about with this one, is they've got donations to build a structure on this, too, which will kind of get them out of the sun and stuff that, that.
It kind of organizes it so they don't just pop up on every corner.
Right.
And that's really, because it becomes a traffic problem when they have a, you know, tomato stand on every corner. So they're trying to organize the downtown portion of it and not take away from the other locations as well.
Okay. No more comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
Six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7669 has passed. Excuse me. Bill number 7670, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Section 710.200 entitled Pretreatment Facilities.
Move for first reading, bill number 7670.
Second.
Motion, second, for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7670, an ordinance amending Chapter 710 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, entitled Sewers and Sewage Disposal by specifically amending certain provisions of the chapter concerning pretreatment facilities in order to conform with policies adopted by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7670, an ordinance amending Chapter 710 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, entitled Sewers and Sewage Disposal by specifically amending certain provisions of the chapter concerning pretreatment facilities in order to conform with policies adopted by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources.
Move for adoption in bill number 7671.
Second.
Can I get 7670?
Seventy. I'm sorry, 70.
7670.
Roll call, no comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
Six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7670 has adopted. Bill number 7671, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving a temporary construction easement to construct a portion of the staircase reconstruction on the PB Railroad Depot Grand Staircase Project within the city's Radaway.
Move for first reading, bill number 7671. Second.
Motion, second, for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7671, an ordinance approving a temporary construction easement relative to the Popper Bluff Railroad Depot Grand Staircase Project.
Move for second reading, bill number 7671.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7671, an ordinance approving a temporary construction easement relative to the Popper Bluff Railroad Depot Grand Staircase Project.
Move for adoption of 7671.
Second.
Motion, second, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilwoman Branham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
Six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7671 has passed. Bill number 7672, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing defeasance of certain bonds issued to finance the city's broadband communication system and approving the release of the system as collateral for additional bonds in connection with the sale of the system, approving certain documents in connection with the foregoing and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Move for first reading, bill number 7672.
Second.
Motion, second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7672, an ordinance authorizing the defeasance of certain bonds issued to finance the city's broadband communication system and approving the release of the system as collateral for additional bonds in connection with the sale of the system, approving certain documents in connection with the foregoing and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Move for second reading, bill number 7672.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?